To the flag. Budge, be agents.
To the flag, United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yeah, can we move that into the middle of the room? That seemed to help. Anybody got a cellphone near there?
Over here.
At this time, we'll have the clerk take the roll call.
Chairman Ames.
Here.
Commissioner Jorgensen.
Here.
Commissioner Piro. Commissioner Schiller.
Yep.
Commissioner Bees. Commissioner Hopala. Hopala. Hopala.
Here.
Commissioner Carlson.
Present.
Mayor Pilon.
Here.
City Planner Stockman.
Here.
Okay, the next thing today, night, we're gonna have approved or amend tonight's meeting agenda, except for 28th, 2021. I'd like to make a motion to take the dates off in the public hearings, sir. In case we in case we have a problem, if we are short, we wouldn't be able to start another public hearing if we're going with these time limits we got on here. So, do we have a second?
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
You're saying the times rather than the dates?
Yes, just the times. Do we have a second?
Just to note that the first three items are public hearings. The last one is not. That was not made clear on the agenda.
Commissioner Jorgensen.
I had a second.
Okay, we have a second. Anybody have any comments to make with this? See none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next thing we're gonna do is approve, amend the meeting minutes of August 24th, 2020. We have a motion for this. I'll make the motion then. Will somebody second the motion? No second motion. Commissioner Hopala seconded. Do we have any discussion? See none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The first thing we're gonna do is open the first public hearing. The first public hearing has to do with a primary plat for Randy and Depp rising 660 360 and 6700 Viking Boulevard Northwest. They are requesting approval of the following three applications. A primary plat to subdivide three existing lots into four parcels with a dedication of a street right-of-way and a establish of a cul-de-sac. And then a conditional use permit to allow the deferral of a street paving requirement for this public street being established. And also a variance for one lot which does not meet the required 300-foot width at the billing setback. We're gonna turn over to our Liz Stockman, our planner, at this time. Present, please. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to summarize, the parcel owned by the Drydens is just under 100 acres. There's a large 80-acre piece and two 10-acre pieces that abut Viking Boulevard. They wish to split the three lots into four parcels for the purpose of building a new home up in this area and then subdividing off a 10-acre piece with the existing house to sell to their son. This is the northern part of the proposed plat. The two lots which front Viking Boulevard currently with the lot line running north-south will be revised to have a 5-acre parcel with the existing home at 6660 and then a new home would go on Lot 2. And then Lot 3, there's a cul-de-sac created for, to create the street necessary to access Lot 3. This is proposed as a 10-acre piece with the remainder being left as Lot 4. So currently, the Drydens have control of 33 feet along the eastern side and the plat is deeding that or dedicating that as a public road. The neighbor had previously they had an agreement with the Drydens to use another 33 feet for their use as a road, but it was not deeded as a public road. So they would need to amend paperwork accordingly to dedicate a permanent public road easement so that we have a 66-foot width. And then the existing 20-foot driveway would be utilized to access all the parcels, except that they need to construct the cul-de-sac at the end here at the terminus so that we have the appropriate turnaround for emergency vehicles. And then the paving deferral is the conditional use permit, which allows paving at a later date. The lots are deed restricted and recorded at Anoka County such that the next subdivision of any lot within this plat would require the construction of that road. So a couple of issues that were raised in the report. The variance is regarding this distance here. The definition of the front setback is measured at the front building setback, which is 120 feet from the center of this cul-de-sac. So we don't have the full 300-foot lot width at this point. That's what the variance is for, is just a little lesser width here. I think it makes sense and that it's acceptable as shown. We just had to go through the proper process to get that approved. When you get over a 10-acre piece, it becomes difficult from a mortgage perspective to get, have a larger parcel and for a mortgage. They were trying to limit the size of this parcel, 3 to 10 acres. I also noted this, this open area or usable area in the back was somewhat landlocked because you can't get to it from this side. This may or may not be of a concern to you. I mean, their daughter owns additional land to the east of this plat. You just can't get to it from the west side here because of where this wetland boundary is. And if that's okay to you, with you, it could remain as is. One solution to the problem would be to dedicate this as an outlot, which requires future subdivision, which will likely happen anyway. And then that would also negate the need for a park fee on this Lot 4. So, a couple notes here is just adding a couple of wetland boundaries that were noted by the wetland specialists when they were on site. And then finally, when we look at a new application from residents, we also look at whether or not the lot is in conformance with current ordinance requirements and/or special use permits that have been provided in the past or approved in the past. So this is the wetland boundary as was delineated. There's no issue there. There's plenty of high and dry land for on Lot 2 for the new home. That will require a custom grading plan at the time of building permit. The soils are very good. There's, in some cases, no modeling or the depth to modeling is 5 feet. So the part of the recommendation is to ask that an amended CUP or an IUP, the application be brought forth sometime in the future to be designated in the findings. Just to address what's going on, on the site at the present time. I think it's, I believe it's in everybody's best interest. When the CUP was approved, originally, there really was no outdoor storage designated. And there's a significant amount of outdoor storage at the present time. So it would be a good idea for several reasons to revisit that. A, with the, with Jason, their son, owning the parcel and living in the house, he's technically the responsible party for this CUP. And then the property will have a new PID number as well. You know, we haven't gotten any complaints from anybody regarding what they're doing. It's just a matter of documenting everything and moving forward with a clean slate. So with that, our office does recommend approval, subject to the conditions listed in the findings. We can talk about those and amend as necessary. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So under, there's three things being considered again. The subdivision, the CUP, and the variance. In terms of the subdivision, the only thing which doesn't meet ordinance requirements would be the that lot width for which a variance was requested. The conditional use permit provisions for the deferral of street paving, they have met those requirements. And the existing driveway for access to the two or possibly three homes is a minimum of 20 feet at the present time. So the the findings are somewhat long because of all those added criteria under the conditional use permit. Would you like to just go through the findings step by step? Or what are you thinking? If there are any questions, we could take those too.
It'd probably be a good idea. Go ahead.
So beginning on page 4 of the findings, under the recommendation, the subdivision and access to County 22 requires review and approval by Anoka County. Even though it's there, we have an obligation to inform them of the request and the subdivision. Item 2 is the neighbors, the Howls dedicate 33 feet to the city in the form of a permanent road utility and drain easement to be reviewed and approved by the city engineer and recorded with Anoka County.
I have a question there that this is requesting that they use it.
How?
No, there's I understand the Drydens, Drydens has a right-of-way to use that as a driveway now.
Actually Doug and his wife deeded us 33 feet. I have an actual quick claim deed, deeding us 33 feet along there. That has been filed back in 2001, I believe. So we, we own that 33 feet that Doug Howl used, he deeded that to us back in the 90s. I think it was in the 90s, actually.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So I, the city engineer's office reviewed that and they they said that it was intended for the Drydens' use. It was not intended for public use. So it has to be deeded for public use, not just for the Drydens driveway use in order for us to consider it a public street.
So what process has to be done then?
Well, so they'll have to revise the document or record a new document, which
It's still gonna be a full-time private driveway. It's not, you're not gonna follow it, you're not gonna grade it?
Not at this point.
Until something else happens on the lot, which we don't intend to do.
Correct, but under the deferral of street paving requirements, the ordinance is requiring the dedication of the right-of-way and in order to do that, we have to have the, the 33 feet deeded correctly or the easement dedicated correctly.
In other words, this is just like up on the last sequel property up there.
Well, right, they did it all at once with 66 feet because they
But they don't have to do anything with that until it's further developed.
Correct, he, yes, Mr. Dryden is correct in saying upon the city approving the deferral of street paving, he's just going to be maintaining the current driveway as a private drive right until such time as the street is built and accepted by the city. That part's definitely correct. But we can't get the full 66-foot right-of-way without a revised document from the neighbor. So that's a condition of approval. We'll have to work with the attorney and the engineer on exactly how that needs to read, I guess.
This is, the changes been made in the ordinance just recently, not too long ago, right?
Well, right, that's the deferral part, yes.
Yeah, it's a new ordinance that we have.
But this is regarding, because the Drydens don't have control necessarily for public use of the full 66 feet. They have their own 33 feet, which is part of the plat.
So what, so what's the difference between the one 33 feet that we own and the other 33 feet that we own? If you understand?
Though, I guess it's the way that, I guess it's the way it was written.
The way the deed was written? Because it's an actual deed, deeding us that property to Randy and I. So the property, the 33 feet was deeded to us on quick claim deed and recorded. So I'm not, when we, we own it, so when we really misdrove, then we dedicate to the city at that moment.
I'm not sure that you do own it because if you did, it would already be shown as part of the plat as public roadway.
Is there a copy of it?
Yeah. Exactly, and I brought, I brought I brought it, it's been there for, since the 90s.
No, we do have a copy and that's what, that's what the city engineer's office
It doesn't say easement, it just said it's 33 feet.
Well, I'm not the professional or, you know, with regard to descriptions and such. That's what I was told by
Well, if you look at, if you look at the certificate of title, which is Torrance property, Doug and his property number is 24. Norm, I mean, Norma, that piece of property is Torrance. So the Torrance property is different at the county. It's not an abstract, so it's different. It's on their Torrance fees. I actually have a Torrance certificate that has Randy and I's name on it for that 33 feet. We own that property. In my case.
Okay, well, we'll get it figured out. I can't get an answer right now, obviously, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mayor.
When, when did the engineer make that determination?
During the review of the plat.
It just, it's surprising that at the public hearing, the applicants didn't know that and I mean, it would've seemed that that, it would've been good to clear that up beforehand, so this wasn't because it makes it harder for the recommendation here because they don't have clear-cut information, so I just
Well, she submitted it, you know, as part of the application. It's all part of the review process. So we still have time to figure it out and just determine what we need before the city council approves it. And they still have, you know, final plat to proceed through also. So it'll likely be back again.
Likely be back to this group?
Pardon me?
Likely be back to the commission?
Possibly, yes.
So what, I'm just trying to figure out, if we had a quick claim deed, deeding us this property, what, that's us as owners, and we choose to fill the road on it for the city use, I don't understand what the difference is of the other 33 feet that we own and we're gonna deed. I don't, I'm not seeing, what kind of document do you want from us?
The, the way it was explained to me is that it was given to you with the purposes for your use, not for public use. That's all, that's all they explained to me. And it's in an email I can share, but we'll
On the other hand, I do have an easement, which is deeded differently and it looks different and says this is an easement for road purposes. That is not what this is. This 33 feet says it's deeded to us. So it's confused by easement, it's not an easement. We own this piece of property. It's a little confusing and what do you want? Because the deed is good.
And it's been using that piece of property for
Since the, since the
For eight years.
Since the 80s.
Right. Sure, I understand.
And actually, when we purchased that property in 84, Doug gave us that strip of land before 22 was even there because his mother-in-law owned it all the way from old 22. And that was given us because we were coming all the way in from the median, it was a long way away. So that was seen to us many years ago. And maybe it's, I was thinking it was a document that he needed, but quick claim deed is legal document, so I'm confused.
So this X22 is holding the bathroom building in your house?
Pardon me?
This, this X22 we got here is holding the bathroom building in your apartment?
Yeah, it's holding this back.
Yeah, one so far.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a building that's just ready to get built. We're building a law home and we're waiting. We don't have no place to put it. So we have to get this through. Our son's waiting to get a mortgage on his land. He's living in the house since March, and he's in. And he's waiting to get financing on his 10 acres. So we're hoping that this will all go through so we can move forward.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Planner.
Yeah, the Drydens, some of the holdup was regarding, you know, the survey that was required to process this request and meet the requirements of the city ordinances, so. We've been working with them since, yes, the beginning of the year. But there was quite a holdup with surveyors and but anyway, we'll move it forward with this condition. We'll figure out what exactly is needed and whether the city engineer is going to allow us to move forward with a separate final plat or simultaneously at council level. So item 3, under the recommendation, is a lot split agreement is drafted by the city attorney, signed or recorded, which prohibits any further division of the lots contained in the Dryden subdivision until such time as the covered street is built to the full width of proposed parcels and accepted by the city. That is a condition of the deferral of street paving requirements, to have that lot split agreement. The wetland boundaries are amended to include the two changes shown in Exhibit H, which are shown in blue. These two small areas were our wetland. When the technical evaluation panel was out there on site, they noted that these areas were not included on the survey. Item 5 is the requirements of Section 10-3-3, subsection C are met, and that's regarding the deferral of street paving. As I mentioned, the driveway is already 20 feet wide and so will be maintained as such with and the construction of the cul-de-sac would be required for turnaround of emergency vehicles. And there's, let's see, item 6 is regarding the turnaround and overhead clearance of 13 feet 6 inches, which is standard for larger vehicles. The bulb is constructed to city standards. As I mentioned, that's item 7. Condition 8 regarding the landlot parcel behind Lot 3 commission should indicate. If that's of any concern to you, as I mentioned, it's not accessible from the larger portion of the 80 acres, but it is accessible from adjacent land to the east. I'm suggesting here that it is either eliminated or designated as an outlot. It could be a small outlot by itself or parcel 4 could be a one big, large outlot also. The south lot line of Lot 3 is amended to meet the required 15-foot setback from driveways or variance is approved allowing that driveway is shown or at a lesser setback. The 15-foot setback is relatively new to the city. The old driveway setback used to be 5 feet. But nonetheless, we should have some sort of a setback from that driveway. The city council shall comment on the need for screening or may waive this requirement based on the limited impact on adjacent properties. Individual septic design is required at the time of building permit application and may be required to fill require or fill to create necessary separation.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mayor.
Planner Stockman, just back to 10. So as, as these findings are for the recommendations from P and Z, do you want the recommendations of the P and Z on that screening to, to go forward to the council? Or do you want to wait till the council for the Drydens to know about the screening?
Correct, yes, P and Z can comment on the screening whether that's a standard requirement of under conditional use permit review criteria is whether or not screening is necessary.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Individual septic system design is required under item 11. Building permit required for the new home, that's standard. Will require a certificate of survey and a custom grading plan with lowest floor elevations noted. Item 13, prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy for the structure, a permanent address placard must be placed at the driveway entrance for the two homes that share that driveway. The applicant must have deeds drafted for review by the city engineer with all the new legal descriptions, including permanent easement designations for the road right-of-way. Park and dedication fees can be discussed. 25, the ordinance reads 2,500 hundred dollars per new lot. So technically, they reconfigured two lots, as I was describing earlier. The lot line currently runs north-south for parcels one and two, but they changed it to an east-west orientation, so they did not create a new lot there. There's really just one new lot, but under ordinance definition, any change in lot lines, the total number of lots is considered new lots, and those without a structure would be two. But, oh, I don't know why. Because normally this, you know, they, they could've gone through this plat, you know, reconfiguring in two steps is what I'm trying to say, one to subdivide and then one time to reconfigure lot lines, but in order to save time and to get it all done at once, it ended up to be a four-lot plat instead of a three-lot split, so technically, it's still a minor subdivision, there's no infrastructure being built. But as I mentioned, one way to avoid that park fee on lot four, the biggest lot, would be dedicated as an outlot, or, given the reconfiguration though, and part of this, I'm not opposed to waiving one park fee. We can chat about that. So item sixteen, the property owners work with the city to address the inconsistencies noted relative to the excavating business, outdoor storage, and the two thousand and one conditional use permit conditions, and an amended CUP application is submitted on or before a date to be determined.
Can I ask a question here, Liz?
Yes.
Is it still, do they still have the excavating business there?
Yes, they're still operating that.
They're still operating that, okay.
Item seventeen, any change involving structural alterations, enlargement, intensification of use, or similar change not permitted by the conditional use shall require an amended conditional use permit. Said permit shall be processed in the same manner as the new application. And then eighteen-
Talking about the conditional use going up to a third one?
That is, well, it's one and the same, so if you come back for an amended CUP to adjust the conditions of the current CUP, that would be processed in the same way that a new CUP is, but this is, item seventeen is technically referring to the CUP being approved as part of this new request, but really the same rules-
What else to do with this lots, but any of them that are on, which is why we're not, which I'm sure this home will have. We were one of the first people that applied for a conditional use permit for our purpose. It was not required, we did it voluntarily, had a knowing we were gonna be caught up in this stoppage. I don't think they would've got a conditional use permit, because there's a lot of evidence out there that are running with the public right now. We've been in compliance for thirty-eight years. Now you want to change?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, honor.
I'm just saying, in reviewing the conditional use permit condition, it is not clear to me that they're in compliance, so it's worth a conversation because it's to the Dryden's benefit as well as the city's benefit to have them be in compliance with conditions listed. The condition number five, which says outdoor storage only in the winter, and then parked behind the barn, is vague, and a lot of times, these older conditional use permit conditions were vague, and we have since learned how to be very specific in our CUPs. But part of the review process for a new application is to look at the compliance of not only anything on the parcel, whether it be accessory buildings, or any other violations of the ordinance, prior to approval of a new application. So it's up to the city council. My job is to raise it as a concern or something for discussion. We have done the same thing for other properties in the city, and everybody should be treated the same. So the remaining conditions are just addressing the, city may hold a public hearing to revoke the conditional use upon the happening of certain events, which includes the violation of the conditions under which the permit was issued. Now, these are referring to the CUP for the deferral of street paving. If no other time is specified, a conditional use must be exercised or put into effect within one year of the date of approval, and any costs associated with the review are the responsibility of the applicant, and any other conditions that you might like to see. So the items needing discussion would be item eight, the landlot parcel, and item nine, the setback to the driveway. On page six, those are the first two conditions needing discussion.
Okay, being that we went through the whole thing, looked at it, now I'm gonna ask the applicant if he has any comments to make on this.
One comment I wanna make is where she has in red, where she's, the driveway goes to the house, but the where she has in red is a, is a road we go around to our barns.
Right here, yeah.
Yeah, and that could be moved. I don't wanna change this, I don't wanna change that, every time the surveyor comes out, it's gonna be, it's a process management, so I'd rather move that, that road back ten feet. We put it there because it just, remember we have a pond there, and you can see the deer, and we didn't wanna, we didn't want to change that lot. It's Florence property, they really don't, that's why we went to a plat to begin with, we were just gonna do a, just, you know, flats cost you more. We went to a plat because it's Florence property, and Florence is a little tougher dealing with, we gotta deal with the terminus, so that's why we chose to go with a plat.
What's wrong with your other question, the lot lot? I don't think you have anything to look at.
It, it looks like you wanted, you want us to get like twelve, or what did you say, thirteen feet or fifteen feet from the lot line?
The ordinance requires fifteen-foot setback from the driveway, but yeah, you're crossing that little wetland, so I mean, to get fifteen might be tough if you-
Well, we have to take some trees out and we can change that. I mean, it's, it's going back to, it's, it's going back to our barns, actual driveway, going to the houses and close to that.
If the commission wants to leave it as is and allow it under the variance, we could do it that way, given the-
Another variance, it's gonna cost us fourteen hundred dollars?
No, no, I would just notice it, and then they could, they could, if you want to, do that, that could be- Do you wanna consider it?
We, we chose where we wanted that line to be. Our son's gonna end up with all of it anyway, so it's, it's just for mortgage reasons, that's all we're trying to do.
There can't be another house to the south commission, so generally, the driveway setback is to avoid issues between neighbors and to allow some space for snow removal and for the planting of trees if necessary, so because there won't be a house to the south here, it's not as big of a deal. If you wanna allow a zero lot line setback for that existing driveway under the current situation, you can make that recommendation, or if you wanna have a move of five feet or something, it would, it shouldn't be-
I would stay up on Andrew a little when I drive it down.
I do it on the way out too, though, so.
Let's, let's go on here. I'm gonna ask the clerk to verify the legal publications and mailings, I suppose these have been completed?
Yes.
Okay. Now, at this time, have we got any questions to ask the planner?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Hopala?
I have a question about this, there's a requirement for a shared driveway agreement. Is this, does this include the neighbor to the west if they were to develop property? And could they, since it's gonna be a public road, or it could be a public road?
Yes, in the future, the neighbor could have access to that public road, yes, but they are not part of the agreement, as written. It's only lots within this plat.
So if the, if the neighbor wanted to develop before, they developed their rear lot, what would happen?
If the neighbor wanted to use the street and were going through the plating process, yeah, they would be required to build the road.
Okay, so the neighbor would build the road?
We would address that as part of that specific subdivision, but we cannot de-restrict land outside of this plat and require that. But the ordinance requires it anyway, that we have access to a paved street, so if their access is not coming off of Viking, that's the reason that the Drydens had to create the cul-de-sac to create an access for lot three, which is the ten acre piece, because your front lot line has to touch a public street.
I have a question, planner. If we treat this as an outlot, I realize that if it's, if there's a lot, it's landlots, but if it's an outlot, it just goes down the record as an outlot, it, they can't do anything with it unless somebody owns the land next to them?
An outlot can't be built upon, it would have to be re-subdivided, which is, it sounds like is there long-term intent anyway to give some of this land to their daughter to the east, and then who knows what'll happen, or how, you know, how much, how much more to be split up in the future.
We're fine if they need an outlot, that is not a problem.
Okay.
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 So lot four is outlot A.
We'll open it up to public, if public wants to have any comments to make here. Is there anybody here that wants?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, mayor.
Just to clarify, so if that is an outlot, is that driveway to the barn setback a problem?
It would still, it would still fall under the required setback, so we can still either approve it under the variance as a zero lot line setback, because lot three won't change even if outlot A or lot four is re-subdivided, so, yes, the setback still applies.
So, so it's re-subdivided, that's an outlot, can be subdivided though?
The outlot can be re-subdivided, right, but unless they purposefully include lot three in a re-subdivision, then it wouldn't normally be re-subdivided.
Are there any more questions that we have here, planning and zoning? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Ray.
Yep.
We had talked about, fire trucks could turn on in the driveway, you know, they're building a house, or they can go down, if a fire truck's coming in, they're not gonna, they're either gonna come in to sixty-six, their old house, and put that fire out, or they can drive all the way back into this one. They got lots of over, turn all the way back. Technically, it's still gonna be a private, right, and you're not building a house, you just want to go with it, and you're something, that's pretty simple.
Well, what do the, the UPS trucks and everything go all the way back there?
Had fire trucks back, did you? Had no problem.
You know there was no problem.
Those neighbors.
Well, I can talk to the city engineer about it and see, I mean, since we do have space for fire trucks to turn around, it's gotta be within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of the house, which it is on lot three, and if they can turn around, if they can, yeah, back in and out of your new driveway, and then go in and out of lot two, that might meet the criteria. Okay, let's see if that was condition... Oh, seven, the cul-de-sac on the south end is constructed, so... Can we add, or is otherwise approved by the city engineer? I can talk to the engineer about it.
Planner Stockman, Nysel, Allison, what did we do with the Folsom family? Didn't they have this situation, and when they had to have access for receiving vehicles, what do you call them, or?
Correct, they were not, they did have to create a driveway with a turnaround that was close to their house, and this one is, yeah, similar to what they did, so-
So can that be a part of like, this, that says, it's gotta be certain dimension for that, or that's not the same?
Because they're dedicating the right-of-way versus, and with the cul-de-sac, bulb is a difference, whereas Folsom were coming off of an existing cul-de-sac.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not-
Not the same?
A hundred percent sure, but it may, it may be okay under these rules. I'll just have to read these a little more carefully and talk to the city engineer. I would recommend leaving that in the conditions for now, and we can work this out along with a couple other things at the city council level, or depending on if the final plat comes back here or not, we can iron everything out. So we're on item nine regarding the driveway setback, what would the commission like to do?
I guess I'd be fine with driving right where it's at right now, it's been fine for how many damn years, and they own all the damn property anyhow, so why screw around with it?
Okay, so you're recommending approving it under the variance?
Yep.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Hopala.
Yes, I, I think that the variance would be permissible in this case due to the, uh, land, this house is not buildable. Looks like it's too low ground to be built. I don't think there'd be any neighbor that'd be concerned about it if the lot was split in the future.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, that is, uh, is there a difference between just the path that goes back to a barn and an actual driveway?
Um, it's, I guess, still considered a driveway setback.
Okay.
You know, some people have one driveway, some people have two, I guess, I would call it a driveway. But there's no additional application needed, we will just notice it and, um, we can go forward to council, at council level.
Yeah, I recommend doing that, yeah, as well.
You're okay with that?
With the variance and just note it.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, item 10, does the commission have any thoughts on screening? This would be related to the driveway coming down or the variance is requested.
I think it could be waived, I don't know how the rest of you feel.
I'm on your side on that too, they haven't had any problems in the past, why create one now?
Okay. And that brings us to condition 15, regarding park and trail, we would just have one park fee with Lot 4 being an outlot. So I'll change that to be one park dedication fee of $2,000, uh, trail fee is $500. And then item 16, is a very conditional use permit for the excavating business. Any thoughts on that? My recommendation would be establish a date by which they need to make application for reconsideration, or...
I'll be honest with you, an IUP is cleaner, CUP.
You could revoke the CUP and issue an IUP.
Is there...
Probably what the attorney would recommend. The IUP is as good for as long as they live at that location. IUPs don't run with the land like a CUP.
The question I have is, is there a cost involved in that, going from a CUP over to IUP?
It'd be the same cost either way to reapply.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Hopala.
Yeah, I, I was thinking the same thing, that this probably was a application for IUP instead of a CUP due to the nature of the business, you know? So that it, the conditional use permit is more linked to a certain characteristic of the lot that's permanent. This is more of a interim business.
Yes, Mr. Grayson.
What are we talking about? So what's the difference in IUP and CUP?
Difference? Wanna explain that?
The CUP runs with the land, the IUP would be in existence as long as you or your son lived there, or if your son had a child that were operating business, and it's all...
Stays with the business.
It stays with the, the house, when you sell the land, it goes away, so that it's not hanging out there, not being used by the next owner. Um, we have had some people with previous CUPs, uh, agree to revoke the CUP and issue an IUP to Jason, um, for this X during business.
So what, you don't need the criteria to use that business?
No, that, no, that's not being...
So why are we not meeting it? I thought everything on there is... Well, the pictures you have are from '17 and '19, if you look at them today, they're a lot cleaner, everything, since my son moved in there, he's cleaned it all up, everything's stacked up behind the buildings, I mean, it's, that's different, but it's, there is...
I was just curious.
There is storage.
I was just curious, but if they change this before the bed, can we be on this anymore?
You can't see it, you know, you work a quarter mile off of 22.
My near, my nearest neighbor...
Is our daughter. Oh, maybe, yeah, she, she can see us, did she complain?
No.
She's a mile away.
She'd really have to work in it, I think.
She'd have to climb the hill and look.
Look, the, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
The reason that I brought it up is because in my interpretation of the CUP, the reference to outdoor storage says only in the winter, then parked behind the barn.
Well, maybe we should be searching for things to condemn our property.
Well, Mr. Dryden, this is my job as part of any new application.
Trying to get the same to fail.
No, I am absolutely not, and it's not up to me, remember, the council will approve or deny your request. But as I stated, anybody that comes in with an application, we look at, are you in compliance with our ordinance or not? My interpretation is...
And like I said, I volunteered for this CUP, particularly when it was granted.
Back in the day.
12, 13 years.
Of course, our business has grown, we was just being him and all, like a family, and we grow, it's the same apartment, we get more farm capital, I...
Well, here's a...
We're in a farming country, we're, we're here, we're, you know, we're running a business, paying our taxes.
I, I agree that you're not necessarily doing anything that's offensive, okay, we haven't had a complaint, but picture this scenario, okay, if land develops around Lot 3 and we start getting complaints about the truck noise.
Yes, I won't be able to...
Well, no, we want you to be, we wanna be able as a city to say, he's in compliance, look here at the conditions, he's allowed to have 20 trucks or whatever it is, so that we can tell the resident that's complaining, he, he has been doing this for X number of years and he is in compliance. That is to your benefit too.
I don't need you to look out for me.
So, okay, so what does it cost to upgrade to, to do a new, is it $1,500 or $1,500, what is the cost?
Yeah, it's, it's $1,480, just like the CUP was, right?
$1,480, just so we, because we have more trucks than the park there.
And that's, yeah, but it's regarding the outdoor storage, that's what I was looking at. That does not seem to jive with the conditions, other than that, yeah, there's nothing that I'm aware of. So it's up to the council, commission would like to make a recommendation in that regard. Um, again, this would be done for any new application, we're not just picking on the Dryden.
Chair. Yes.
I think we should just leave this alone, I don't know why we need to, uh, try to reinvent the wheel, they've had no complaints, there's already conditions, you know, that are in this CUP already. If they're out of compliance at some point and people complain, you already have something here that you can go against them on. Why do we wanna change all of this, I guess, I don't understand why, just have to keep bringing more and more stuff up to all these people all the time?
Like I'm saying, the, the outdoor storage conditions are not specific and they're not clear, so...
Just be, just because they left a bank back, you know, in 2001, doesn't necessarily mean that we need to change it now, it's been working since then, why, why wreck this?
Well, I'm saying, well, if somebody in the future comes forward, that's all, I mean, it's, it's to everybody's benefit to be, to know what they want, it's certainly understandable that their business has grown, and the conditions, you know...
Have changed.
If you don't see a problem with it, then that's, you know, then make a recommendation as such, but my job was to point it out to you, so, um, I'd be glad to, um, talk more about it.
I personally can see that in the future, there could be a big, big problem with it. Cause right now, we're dealing with these CUPs, and we have a lot of problems with these CUPs. In fact, there's a lot of them out there we haven't even taken, taken off the books yet because they're not operating anymore. And, and, and I, I know this, what the lawyer, lawyers made this statement for, going with an IUP makes it so much cleaner, and, and there's protection for both the city and also the landowner.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Hopala.
Yes, I, I think it would be to their benefit to have it converted to a, updated to protect them from any future action by some future development.
Oh, I could do an IUP if I am not charged $1,500 worth.
And I think, uh, I think it would be beneficial too if it was somehow rolled into the, if the fees could be rolled into their existing application somehow, I don't know if there's a way to do that, but since it's, uh, they're already paying a lot of money for this, all these different things they're doing with their lot.
We're paying $980 for a variance setback on a lot that's in the middle of, of 2 acres.
So if we, if we can somehow recommend that they convert it to an IUP that has conditions that are, protect them in the future from what they're doing, if what they're doing is okay with everyone and the, and the neighbor.
I'm kind of protected in my business by a lot of 120 acres.
But we gotta remember, if we look at the old CUP that you have, they have right now, according to our ordinance, they've already broke this CUP with, what was wrote in there back in, what was it, 2001 or whatever it was, because of the outside storage, it's not what it was originally set up for.
I think it was only in the winter because our equipment was, we did commercial, so our equipment is sitting out in, on sites, and in the winter, our equipment all comes home for the winter while we work on it. That's, that was the winter storage, that was that, that's, that's what that was meant for. Cause right now, we have equipment sitting all over, working on jobs, and in the winter, it all comes home. That was the reason for that.
Do we have any more comments here in the, in Planning and Zoning?
I, I don't, I don't see a, we're gaining anything of it. Because a conditional use permit, you can do the same thing you can with an IUP, it's just a little bit slower. That's all it is. That's basically what it amounts to, if they're not complying, then you... But most people cannot see back there, they won't know if he's got a motorcycle or if he's got a Lamborghini back there. We don't know what you've got back there, we, and that's what the, the problem usually is, is that people see a mess, but we're not seeing the mess here, we don't see it, it's way back there, and there ain't gonna be probably anybody back there other than the one today's supposed to be.
That's right.
They got a Lamborghini back there, huh?
I, I don't see no reason we should be wasting more good, harder and cash on something that we're not really gaining anything. And that's really what you've got here, you're not gonna gain a thing by doing that, and so, so there was a, a condition not met, then you better go around to all of us that have a CUP or an IUP and do the same thing, because that's not, not a real fair thing you're doing there. It's just, uh, because the team, like, we're, we're getting kinda heavy-handed with that. Things are working good, let's leave them alone, don't mess with something that's, uh, doing its job. And anybody that's in the construction business would probably agree with me, because, uh, I have a lot of things, uh, when you're firing, you can't get them all in the, in the building, I don't care what, I mean, you can try, but it ain't gonna happen. And we don't say nothing about that, thank goodness, because if you did, you'd be in real trouble.
Do we need any more, let's hear, before we close, Public hearing?
Well, you either need to eliminate condition 16, uh, indicated that you want an amended CUP then, or nothing at all? IUP, amended CUP, or just remove the condition altogether?
Does that move with you? I meant, it was an amended CUP, is all the parcel ID the same when you're splitting this? Is it still gonna be?
No, that's one other.
Okay, so that CUP has to be amended to state the correct plat, or, I mean, the personal ID?
Parcel ID, yeah.
It has to?
Yeah, we're in a shop, or... Okay, if that won't, let's get rid of the evidence.
No.
Well, if there's no more, if, no, no more discussion on this, we'll close it, Public hearing, close the Public hearing, now we'll act upon it. We went through all these recommendations here from the, uh, the planner. And we, you've, you've noted all the changes we recommended, right?
I did.
Okay. And the only thing that probably is, is a big issue right now is whether the, the CUP, they're operating the CUP according to the way it was wrote. You know, if, 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 we're gonna accept the CUP as, as it is and continue on as a president, what they're doing, or to ask them to have an IUP, so we need somebody to make a motion, one way or the other, which way we should be going. And then we'll go there. Chair.
I think that we need to just amend the CUP to the new PID.
Is that a motion, Commissioner?
I, I will motion that, how about that?
Do we have a second motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Jorgensen seconded it, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Yes, Commissioner Hopala.
Yeah, so if we amend the, uh, CUP, would we, uh, just change the PID and keep everything the same? Is that costing nothing then, or is there, is, is that possible, or?
If you, if you would like to make the recommendation that they are allowed to move forward with an amended CUP for the existing excavating business, um, using the current escrow that they have in place, uh, it has to come back to you for a public hearing under the required process. So we would, we would amend the CUP with a different PID number, you can update conditions to address the outdoor storage that's out there, and, um, proceed that way, but it would have to come back to you and be no, noticed to the paper as a separate public hearing.
So would that be, it has to be amended no matter what, because it's a different property ID?
No, it does not, um, you, property IDs change, but I would highly recommend because of the different ownership, although it is still in the family, but I, I would think, I think it's in their best interest to do so, to amend it and be more specific, but it does not have to change the PUD, there's, or change the property ID. There are a lot of properties out there that have an IUP or CUP and, that have been subdivided further, and the business still is in existence. Would it be cleaner, yes?
Chair, so this is, CUP would stay with the exact PID number? Chair, so this, CUP would stay with the exact PID number that is right now?
No.
No.
There, that PID number won't even exist anymore after the subdivision.
I think you almost have to have that PID match up with the CUP at all.
I, it would be highly recommended.
And we can do that without them paying any more money and stuff like that, right?
If that's what you want to do, you can move it that way and we'll notice a hearing and just bring everything up to date. And if you choose to add conditions or even just define what the outdoor storage is so that that's clear to everybody, then it makes some sense.
So we could change or just leave them alone?
That would be, yeah, your choice at the time, right?
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We could cha-change the CUP at that time to no cost, with no additional cost. We just amend it to be more clear as to what?
You can make that recommendation that we're,
Okay.
we will accept the new application using the existing escrow. Um, and then we'll notice it as we normally would. We'll have them fill out an application. And they currently have escrow remaining, so we can, we can deduct the fees which would be, you know, for the hearing and for the, um, just administrative fees, I guess. Yeah, there's recording fees and.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So just to clarify, it, it still will cost more money.
Yes.
Right.
But that's gonna come out of existing escrow. So they don't have to, they still have to pay as if they were going through the process again.
Correct.
But they're not coming up with more money again to pay the escrow.
They're just not gonna give them much escrow back.
But they could do the same thing with an IUP, couldn't they?
Well, right. They, either way, it's the same application, same fees, same everything.
But if they did it with an IUP, they'd still come out of their escrow?
Yeah.
It's not gonna cost them anymore? E-either way, it's, it's gonna, it's.
We are deducting it from their escrow, we're not asking them to put up more money for the application.
Okay.
Still come out of it.
Oh, just get less back.
Yeah, you're still paying for it either way.
Right.
So, so I was gonna ask that question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mayor.
So what is, what is your time? So what does this all have to do? Because it, because right now, they've got a building kit sitting somewhere waiting for a hole. So this needs to get done, winter's coming. So what can be done to expedite this process? Because if they have to come back to this commission in October and it has to then go to the council in November, it's gonna be snowing.
Right, I'm not concerned with getting the amended IUP or CUP done. I would rather get the subdivision done so they can move forward. That's why I left this open spot for a date. You know, maybe you want to give them.
You're talking about on condition sixteen?
Right, so I wouldn't, no, I'm not concerned with getting that changed before the subdivision is approved. Correct.
So if, if that subdivision is approved and they decide they don't want to go through with this change, what's that gonna do to this recommendation?
If they don't want to go through with it, you're saying?
Yeah.
Well.
It seems like you're tying them together right now under the recommendation.
Well, typically, yes. When you're looking at a new approval for a property, you would want to address any inconsistencies that are there or non-conformities. Um, that's why there would be a date, a deadline date, or six months or whatever. Um, but, yeah, I see what you're saying. I mean, they have, we've got them, we, we don't want to hold up necessarily recording, but they have to come back with a final plat anyway. So really, it could be done consecutively or at the same time.
So, so, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mayor.
So let me, let me ask this, thinking out of the box here. The, the question here then, on sixteen, is you want to clear up the CUP, IUP issue and it needs a public hearing. Escrow money's there, but it's still coming out of their pocket. Um, they need to get buildings, so they need this whole package done. You'd like to see the package done as a whole rather than piecemeal this over time because you lose your leverage once they start building. If I've got that accurately.
Correct.
Um, so they have to come back with the, the plat?
Yeah, so we have a final plat anyway to bring back.
How long does that take?
That would be, that could be as soon as next month. If, depending on, you know, they're, I'm assuming it wouldn't take much for your surveyor to prepare that.
Scratch out that lot four and change it to outlot.
Yeah.
So, so, so my question here is.
Why doesn't this follow up?
It's a preliminary, that's.
So, so my question is, and not to try and usurp the process here, but if we're really talking about the addressing the CUP, which has to, if there has to be a, a, um, public hearing on that, where they have to get the final plat, can that be done at the council meeting level in October twelfth?
Uh, yeah, I don't know if that's enough time to get this development agreement, although that could come after. That could be conditioned on council approval of getting that development agreement signed.
Because that would, that would save a month and a half and keep us out of November. They could have a decision with conditions if the final plat could be done. If the commission's okay with that part of it, you make your recommendations on the rest of it and let the council take that second public hearing to expedite the process.
If I get the public hearing notice in the paper?
I think it's a great idea. I don't see that very often.
Public hearing notice would have to be in the paper tomorrow.
Ten days?
We have till what, ten AM?
What is so today's? Tuesday.
Tuesday, the twenty eighth.
So tomorrow, yes. It has to be in the paper, doesn't necessarily have to be mailed out, but it does need to be by end of business day on Wednesday.
Are you sure? I thought it was ten AM. Well, anyway.
Yeah, tomorrow.
But if, if the commission's, if that's acceptable as part of their recommendation, we could notice it tomorrow in the paper or get the paperwork filed. And it could be done in October, decided October twelfth, that all the conditions can be met at that point. And that would give you an extra month to get going, is that helpful?
Yeah, that would be ten days. So we'll notice the I, or amended CUP and the variance for the driveway. That works. If that works, we can do it. I just don't know if I can squeeze, well, try to get the final plat in there, but it depends a lot on your surveyor whether I can get that.
The final plat?
The final plat.
I think it would, I don't think it would take much.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I don't want to complicate things, but if we can expedite it, that's helpful.
Okay, yeah, let's aim, let's aim for that anyway. Does that sound acceptable to the commission?
You want to add that to your motion?
Yep.
You second it?
I'll second it.
You want to add it to the motion?
It's a good idea.
Okay, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Does this motion include, um, one, item fifteen, one park dedication fee of twenty-five hundred, park slash trail dedication of twenty-five hundred versus two? Hold on. Um, deleting item, condition ten, there's no screening required.
Yep, we're leaving the driveway as is.
Right, and then item nine is changed to noticing.
Fifteen foot.
Notice paper, um, to allow zero lot line setback. Um, item eight, yeah, was already changed to outlot eight for lot four. And then, um, condition seven is, cul-de-sac is constructed or is otherwise approved by the city engineer. I'll talk to him. I think it's okay if we just go with, as long as each house has a turnaround area or the ability to access by fire vehicles, I believe that meets the intent, so I will double check that. So we'll leave in item seven for now. So that, that would be the motion then? Is that acceptable, Mr. Schiller?
Yep.
Oh, one final thing. On the last page, I had a signature line. Um, if you recall, when we had our little work session with the attorney, he had indicated that we would be asking property owners with IUPs and CUPs for signatures agreeing to the conditions. Well, apparently, I was wrong, it does not include CUP, it only is referencing IUP. So I'm striking these signatures from the bottom of this, these findings, because it's a CUP, okay? That was per the attorney recommendation.
Just, just a note on that, um, as your boilerplate, you've got both IUP and CUP in that document.
And where at?
So in that paragraph, your, your, your tail end of the first sentence is an IUP and then the, the tail end of the third sentence is a CUP. It comes again later on the.
Oh, yeah, he didn't even like that language, so.
It comes, it comes again on the, the Jones hearing. It's got CUP in there.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you for noting that. So we had a motion and a second. We had a motion by Schiller and a second by Carlson, okay?
Right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Everybody in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both? Motion carried. Okay. Paper they take it on.
Thank you for your creation. I'll be touched before the conference. You want me to tell all the commissions, permission? That'd be awesome. Mark tomorrow, okay, appreciate that, thank you. Or you could scan it if it's coming in here if you still have it. Okay, all right, thanks.
Aren't you just down twenty-two there?
Thank you, all right, thanks.
Okay, we'll open the next public hearing. It has to do with a preliminary plat. Matt Ward, six, seven, eight, nine, Old Viking, is requesting approval of a preliminary plat for two five-acre lots which will obtain access from Bolson Street and exit City Street. Well, surrendering the plan at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, this one should go rather quickly. We have one ten-acre piece to be split in half. It currently has, uh, existing local street access on Basalt Street. It's a two-lot plat. The owner had to plat instead of getting a minor subdivision because he's already gone through a minor subdivision for this parcel and you can't split a second time by meets and bounds. Uh, both five-acre lots meet the ordinance requirements for width and, um, other parameters. A custom grading permit, or custom grading plan will be required at the time of building permit approval. All the drainage on this, these two lots kind of goes from northwest to southeast and into the Basalt Street ditch. Uh, the soil borings have been provided and lot buildability won't be a problem. This is very high ground. So, uh, the staff recommendation was for approval of this two-lot plat.
Can we technically subdivide it? And we're, right, now, then now. It's already subdivided once or twice?
Uh, once, but it just, it's based on eight per forty.
Okay, and these lots going to the existing neighbors? And he's gonna be sold to some Johnny builder or flip house center? But I, I know the one neighbor to the north was interested in that project, but I'm not sure what's going on in the salt there.
I have no idea who they're going to. But every lot that is built upon in the city gets reviewed under the same parameters for building material requirements and.
So you got a paved road, a turn lane and nothing? We just gotta hold through the field and call it quits?
For a driveway?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, yeah, that he would be accessing on the existing drive.
So he doesn't have anything to improve Basalt at all? Is it subdivided on that thing?
Not unless the city council requires it, yeah, it's an existing gravel road.
Can I ask who's speaking?
Harris, I live right across the street.
Okay, we haven't came to the point where you, you can.
I would just ask him, he doesn't have time for that.
Yeah. Let's go on. Wish we could report there.
So if you want to look at the findings, um, again, this is very straightforward. The recommendation is to approve the two-lot preliminary plat entitled Ward Acres. Uh, individual septic system design is required at the time of building permit application. Building permits will require a custom grading permit, certificates of survey, the fines, the finding lowest floor elevation, et cetera, and approval by the city engineer. Uh, the applicant must have these drafted for review by the city engineer that reflect the new legal descriptions and easement designations. Um, they are providing additional easement, I believe, for Basalt Street. The applicant is responsible for recording the necessary documents out of Oka County. All property taxes must be paid in full for the year. Uh, there will be park and trail dedication fee, twenty-five hundred for a lot, for one new lot, paid prior to the city signing final documents and before recording. Um, the reason we're, we are, um, requiring one park and trail fee here is because he's already paid one when he split a few years ago for that ten-acre parcel. And then lastly, all costs associated with review are the applicant's responsibility. So very straightforward subdivision, any questions on this one?
And you say the applicant's not here, right?
He is not here.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the clerk at this time, she'll verify the legal publications and mailings and postings have been completed.
Yes.
Now, any questions we have here, ask the planner. If not, it's open for the public, if anybody in the public want to make any comments to the same?
No, just go ahead.
I'm gonna give you a name and address, please.
Paul Harris. Um, I'm just concerned about the, the traffic, he's already terrible on that road. And I don't know where the, exactly where the driveways at, but at the top of the hill, that's already a dangerous spot. The cars could climb down there. I don't know what exactly, what, why you can subdivide it, he's already subdivided. Why can't you just sell the ten acre plot? You said I have two, why can't you just deal with one? That's, that's, that's a huge concern, right? He's already subdivided, the lot's already there, it's ten acre piece. Why can't you just sell the acres?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, well, every property owner, if they have forty acres, is, is due eight lots if, if they can eke it out of there with, you know, with the density requirement. Um, he's got a giant parcel to the east, or pardon me, west of here that's also still subdividable and that one would likely have a cul-de-sac or something down on the Old Viking. Um, but this one, this ten-acre piece, so as long as there are still divisions allowed under that eight per forty designation, it doesn't matter if it's him or somebody else.
So we make rules and then we can just change them because, because, all right, that's what I'm doing.
No, there is no rules that have been changed. It's been eight per forty since before we were a city.
Right, and I just want to read them with the original from the city of Burnson, or Burnson Council. I was just reading that, that. I was just reading that, that, you know, they changed it a little bit. I get that, it really has to be accurate and what have you, but. Split's a split. Otherwise you leave it out. The next guy buys it or whatever, he can split again and then he can split again and he can split again. But one subdivision per owner, is that what does not the rules? Or you can just?
Only, well, by meets and bounds.
Right, meets and bounds.
So that's why he had to plat this division.
Right.
And he's now down as low as he can go with five acres unless he replats the whole thing. I told him that he could have gotten three lots out of here or even four with two and a half acres, but he didn't have the lot width necessary.
So we got two and a half acres now in, in, in.
If it's part of a plat, yep, you can. If the overall average is five. It's been that way since before we were a city.
But I never, it was always five acres before this. And I grew up in this town. My dad been here since, uh, maybe nineteen fifty-three. You know, I'll settle with me around there. And just some of this stuff kind of upsets me a little bit because you guys just kind of sway where the money comes from. And it's like, you know, that bullshit. And that's my opinion. So subdivisions don't mean, so why don't we even have subdivision meanings other than to just say eight or maybe? Because it doesn't mean anything. He's already subdivided and now he's doing it again. And that's, that's all I'm saying. I don't understand that part. Not the highly educated man, but I understand rules are rules and rules shouldn't be changed upon somebody's benefit. Is what I'm trying to say.
So if, so if somebody splits a forty into two twenties, they shouldn't be.
No, I didn't say that, that's fine. It should be stuck at two twenties, that's right. Because subdivision, if you can only subdivide one time per you guys' rule, then that's it, that's a one time.
No, they can only subdivide one time by meets and bounds, which is a minor subdivision.
Okay, so what does meets and bounds mean on that? The legal term of meets and bounds?
Meets and bounds is a long description, like the north thirty-hundred feet of the south quarter, quarter of section, whatever.
Right, okay.
So a plat is described by lots and blocks. So this is Ward Acres, Lot One, Lot Two of Lot One.
I see.
So it's more.
So it's a bunch of technical, uh, basically it's reworded around that lots and bounds.
Well, a plat requires additional information and sort of a historic look into, um, you know, property corners and such, to be sure there's no discrepancies. Meets and bounds is.
I just, I just was wanting to make that clear in my own head because I am still confused on these fancy words. So that's all I really have to say about it. I was just concerned about, why can't you just sell a ten? Why is that with a two? It's just, it's just, you know, because the next thing you know you're going to be complaining about the neighbor's cows and, you know, the flowers on the way up in the front yard and whatnot. So it's like, I, I just, I'm not well-chinched, I'm sorry. So that's all. I don't want to miss the mail sometime.
All right, thank you.
We do have an ordinance, we got to go by the ordinances. And we don't understand everything. I don't understand everything, you know, and see that's why we have our planner here to explain this first. But anyways, let's go on now. Is there any, any additional comments from the people in the crowd, obviously? If not, if we don't have any more questions, we'll close this public hearing. So we close this public hearing, now we're active on it. This is just a simple lots split. It's, we got the fours here and somebody like to make a motion to accept this? Commissioner Hubler?
I'll make a motion to accept this split because it seemed to abide by all the city rules on this.
Okay, thank you. Do we have somebody that wants to second this? Mr. Durbin? Commissioner Durbin? You seconded it?
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion?
Subject to the conditions as listed.
And she's got, I think you've got seven of them, don't you?
Correct.
Subject to seven conditions. Okay, call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we'll go to our, our third public hearing. The third public hearing, now, let's see. It's, "A public hearing inter use permit by Douglas and Sharon Jones, six-one-six-seven Viking Boulevard, a request and approval and an inter use permit to allow an extended home business on this twenty-point fifty-five foot lot. Mr. Jones and his wife occupy the existing house and plan to operate prime craft cabinet business within the existing six thousand S.P. pole shed." Planner Stockton, would you like to present what you have?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The proposal is for an extended home business operated out of the six thousand square foot shop, which exists on the property. Uh, Jones just bought the property very recently. It's approximately a twenty-acre piece located on Viking Boulevard, just west of the Brook and. There's a small shed on the building or on the property, but they intend to use primarily the larger barn for the shop. It's called Primo Craft. Uh, he's a cabinet maker. He specializes in bar, um, bars to be sold, both online, mostly online, actually, where he has instructions of how to put them together and he ships them out in partial pieces, is what I understand. So Mr. Jones has created this site plan to create the access he needs for delivery trucks and vans as well as future possible employee parking. It's just currently him at the present time operating this business. He would like to grow to two or three employees and he's left space for that parking. He's indicated a trash receptacle area, which is great. I did note in the report that trash area or recycling has to be screened with some sort of fencing. So the driveway is shared up until a certain point where the trucks can circle around and go back out. Um, I was just sharing this drawing of a large vehicle turning radius to show that we're, you know, really for a larger truck need about eighty feet across, um, eighty feet across for a complete turn of a semi. Generally speaking, yeah, this, this proposal is not unlike other cabinet makers we have in the city. We'll just be chatting about some of the minor things that need to be changed on the site plan. I don't believe we have any neighbors in attendance. And generally, staff is in favor of this IUP. So, let's see here. Oh, I did create, include this chart of different size vehicles, so that we can just ensure that we have the proper turning radius on site for these trucks to turn around, whether it be a hammerhead design or a full circle. And then, um, this last drawn is proposed sign, which doesn't meet the requirements size-wise. It's a two-by-three foot sign that we would like to put down near the street so that trucks know where they're going. So any questions? And then we can go through the findings. Mr. Jones is here, if you would like to give him an opportunity to speak as well.
Okay. Does that, does applicant like to address and say something there?
I think Liz did a fine job, they don't really have anything to add.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to ask the clerk to verify the legal publications mailing postings have been completed.
Yes.
Okay. Have we got any questions for the planner here or? Or the applicant?
Chair, there's a, there's, there's plenty of room for like a thirty-four building to get into a building and stuff to turn around, correct? With that.
Right, he's, there isn't now. He's going to create this gravel turnaround, yes.
Then we're good.
Yeah, he's right. He does, also does not want the trucks to have issues. Uh, we certainly don't want a truck backing in off of Viking. So the signage will help the trucks to know where they're going and then with him creating the turnaround, that will facilitate easy in and out. It's not always a large vehicle, sometimes a van or a, you know, UPS-type delivery also.
Do you think there needs to be any screening there?
Um, that would be up to you. There's no outdoor storage. If you, you know, want a couple of trees or something in the island area to sort of buffer the parking, the gravel along the building, that, that's up to you. So he's required to, yeah, fence the refuse area. So no outdoor storage other than what is allowed normally in a residential district, which is up to three recreational vehicles or trailers. And then he plans to park his own truck inside the building.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mayor.
Address a couple of things there on the recommendations.
Pardon me?
Can I, uh, address a couple of things on the recommendations?
Yes.
So, one, just, just for clarification, you know, at least if you do this or Liz does this preparation, we should, to be accurate, say rather than approved, because it gets confusing when somebody leaves here and they think they're approved and it's recommending for approval. I noticed this on each of these. So they go recommending for approval, but just to clarify, the city council has to make the final approval. If somebody's new to the process, the, the recommendation should say rather than is approved, but the commission recommends approval. Item number one, hours of operation, Monday through Friday, seven to five and Saturday, seven to five. With question mark, PM. Is, is it going to be Monday through Saturday, seven to five? Is seven to five on Saturday? Not determined yet?
So Monday through Friday, seven to five and the occasional Saturday is necessary. So I think that's why the question was put on there.
So if the occasional Saturday is, is necessary, is, is seven to five?
Seven to five.
Okay, so.
Attention. You know, we all like to speak on Saturdays, right?
Yeah. Well, and typically neighbors do too, but I mean it's.
Right.
So I think that needs to be clarified and, and, and then again, as, as the planner was referencing earlier, in our previous history as a township, we weren't always clear in our conditions. And so, um, reading this, there will be no activity on Sundays.
Correct.
Okay. Condition number two, you understand it's two full-time employees or four part-time employees or the equivalent thereof?
The equivalent, yes, I understand.
Okay. And then item number eight, we're talking about this. So do we have a timeframe on getting the driveway in? And will that, obviously, if it's going to fit a semi-trailer, the emergency vehicles can get in? Is that the understanding, Liz, that the proper driveway setup will allow for the emergency turnaround as well?
Well, we don't require that for existing homes.
But for an IUP with a business.
For the IUP, right, that's the intent, is to have this accommodate the trucks, which would in turn be acceptable for, right, an emergency.
So, so my question would be, um, we have our own fire department now, so I'm, I'm much more sensitive some of these because we don't have fire inspectors from Ramsey doing this. But looking at the flammable product that will be used potentially in that big building, you got to make sure your fire trucks can get out without driving next to the building. Can they back up towards the house? Can they get in and out of there? If you're aware of that. Because if that building is the one on fire, we have to get tanker trucks in and out.
Got you. And. What's how much clearance desire required?
That I'm not certain, that's why I just.
Well, the twelve-foot width is, is acceptable and he was, um, in agreement with the twelve-foot driveway, so.
I think this point is, is that if, if the truck needs to make the circle to go get more water, it's got to go within twenty feet of the building.
Right.
That's on fire, that may be ill-advised.
But if you can make an area here, like they could pull in here and back up.
Right.
Or they could pull in here and back up, right, so.
Yeah, and so I'm saying, you know, based on that last discussion we had with the Drydens, you have the equivalent there of what we show as a reasonable turnaround. We just have to make sure that they can get in, dump water and get out.
Right, so, well, maybe if there was an area to get through on this side of the dumpsters too. I mean, that would keep it away from the barn a little bit. Or, yeah, you just maybe make a little different radius change here so that the trucks can back in or out that way. But generally, yeah, I, it's reasonable, just with a little tweaking. And here, he's got the radii that would accommodate.
What if the rectangle driveway or parking lot up there came straight down and connected with that radius and you just get rid of the big armor? So that gives you a large gravel area to maneuver around.
Oh, yeah, I, that's what I kind of meant too, is that there's an area here in front of the dumpster to get.
Right.
Straight through. Yeah, do you want to just maybe think about it?
Well, now that I'm in the house and I can walk the land, it's, it's clear that the big radius is going to be more difficult to achieve than what it looked like on the, uh, the picture because it's a sloping hill. So either your truck's going to be tipping sideways, which they don't like, or I got to move a lot of dirt. So if we can go straight in and just make a, uh, an area where they can have adequate to, to drive in, back up and then drive out, that might be more, uh, more.
A bit sweeping kind of.
Yes.
Area here, yeah.
Yeah.
So they pull in here and back up or pull up here and back up? Do you, where do you think you unload on this end?
You would load right, right there, definitely.
Okay.
That would be where you'd unload.
So they pull this way, they back in and then go straight out, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if you can come up with a revised layout in the next couple of days and you can present that to council, is that?
I can do that.
That would be great. Does that answer your question?
So that, so that would be, my other question is, when would that be complete? So prior to going to council?
So I would, yeah, ask for that in the next few days, maybe by Friday? Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay. And then obviously, number nine, for the planning commission making a recommendation if there's any additional screening or landscaping. And my own other comment was, again, as I said before, on the IUP statement in the back, it, it does say CUP too, so you want to clean that up?
So I'll revise that. Attorney Ruthie had a much more simple, um, line that just basically says, I agree to the conditions outlined herein. So I will revise this.
And then, yeah, depending what he said, the last line, the interview's permit shall remain effective as long as the conditions agreed upon are observed. I would just change that to maintained because we don't want to have to go out and observe them all. If they're maintained and somebody complains about it and they're maintained, it doesn't matter. If they aren't maintained, then that's a problem.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Hubler?
I'd like to ask the applicant if they, uh, plan on ever having outdoor storage because this doesn't have it on there?
No, there's, the, the material that we're working with, our water census, outdoor storage would be inappropriate.
Would you ever have trailers or something on the property?
No.
Okay. So if, uh, if you ever expanded and you had to put your truck outside, wondering if you'd want to put that on your application for? Because otherwise we probably won't need screening, but if we, if we're going to plan.
You can't, uh, you can't see this. You can't, you can't see this building from Viking Boulevard, no matter what, right now. The driveway is definitely, because it's not a straight driveway.
It's already screened, then.
Yeah, it's, it's really quite well screened. You can't. I don't believe you can even see that building from Viking. You can see the house.
For about a second and a half.
Neighbors can't see it either?
Neighbors can see it from their shed. Their shed would be in the lower.
This neighbor here?
Yes.
Yes.
And he indicated that he was all, all four. He wasn't able to come tonight, but he was.
And I thought that he had sent an email, but I don't see it as part of the packet. But he did communicate to me when I was looking into this that he was fine with what he understood the development to be. So, I thought he was gonna put that in writing, but I don't see it as part of the package.
Yeah, I never got any email or formatted anything.
Had it in the window keys, so.
Oh, okay.
Chair?
Commissioner Shirley, Shirley.
Okay, so, I guess, what I think, what he's trying to, trying to say, that you have in here, that only thing that's gonna be out there is employee vehicles. You know, a year down the road, there's a possibility you might buy a trailer, you might buy another truck or something like that that might be outside. It might be in your best interest right now to write down that, you know, there might be possibly, you know, two vehicles outside and possibly two trailers, even if you don't plan on doing it in the next two years, five years, fifty years. You know, it might not be a bad idea to write that in here right now, so then you are covered later on down the road.
What is the process to add that in?
Just to talk about it now, instead of if you were to add it later, then you'd have to reapply and go through all that again.
We'd like to add the.
So, under number two, we would put in there where it says, where there's nothing outside, or not number two, number three, we're gonna add two vehicles and up to two trailers.
The other thing to note, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
He, with twenty acres, I mean, he's able to add on to the building, although he's a little close on setbacks on the north side. Anyway, he could also have a second building or a third building somewhere. Ten acres has no limitations on number or size. But if, yeah, you tell us what, how many items you'd like outside that would allow you a little room to grow.
I guess one truck, two trailers.
You don't want it to be two trucks, two vehicles?
I, I don't, no. Because with only two employees, there's really no, you're not gonna be able to do that, so.
Most likely enclosed trailers, right?
They're probably less likely to be business-related and more likely to be son-in-law-related.
Is that acceptable to the commission?
Is that guy ready to take him?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think we closed the public hearing, did we?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Now, we'll act upon it with all these changes we've already discussed. Does somebody wanna make a recommendation?
We see the motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Hapla.
I'd like to ask applicant if they were, if they had read all these conditions and were in agreement with them all.
Have I read the conditions? Yes.
You're, you agreed with all these conditions and?
Yes.
Mr. Chair? Sorry.
Yes.
Were you through, Mr. Hapla? I just wanna ask what you, in your mind, what's your timeframe for the driveway construction?
I guess we would act on it as soon as we have approval. So, we're hopeful to get it done before winter, but, you know, what do we got? Six weeks here before cross? So, it's, it's gonna be iffy whether it gets done yet this winter or not, which is gonna be a problem. But if push comes to shove, we'll continue to go pick material up and bring it back that way rather than having delivery trucks.
Mr. Chair? Yes, Mayor.
So, this would be before the council on October 12th?
Right.
Decision will be done by then.
So, as long as I can get it done between October 12th and whenever our cross starts set in November?
I think we scheduled it for late December, I see.
You've gotta schedule this year.
We appreciate that.
Don't hold me to that. Farmers all that, I think.
Or even a portion of it, three of our.
It's in my best interest to have it done, because it's going to create a lot of problems if I don't for this winter. The goal, the goal would be to start moving into that space November 1st. That's what we're working on, aside from your process, on the assumption that they're gonna be approved.
Didn't you have a motion on it?
Yes. Okay, if you wanna make a motion?
Mr. Hapla? I thought he was starting one, but maybe I'm wrong. Either way, it doesn't matter.
Well, you can make whatever.
Well, let's go ahead and approve it as it is with what he, the changes that we suggested, and let it go with that.
Okay, do we have a second this motion?
Second motion. Hapla, seconded, had any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, then we're striking item nine, which is requiring or asking about screening?
Yes, yes.
And adding two vehicles or two, or one vehicle, two trailers.
Plan revised by Friday for the driveway. Driveway construction as soon as possible. Yeah, that's the first. Yeah, hours are Monday through Saturday, seven to five, no activity Sunday. Okay, thank you. So, motion by Mr. Carlson? Harold? Mr. Jorgensen?
Seconded, thank you.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Seeing that, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now, we'll go to the last one, what he's been waiting for all night. This has to do with Woodhaven Concept Plan. Larry Schoquist is proposing nine new single-family lots on forty-seven point forty-eight acres with frontage of Clarity Road and old Viking Boulevard, Sodium Street and Placid Street. And our planner presented what she has.
Nine new lots on forty-seven and a half acres. Smallest lot is three point three-nine, largest lot is nine point one-four. Overall average is five-acre density, as required. The property is located between Sodium Street and Clarity Road. And the concept looks like this. Mr. Schoquist has spoken with the property owner to the north here. This cul-de-sac that comes down from the south was originally intended to be a temporary cul-de-sac. But after the city engineer had the wetland delineation and got a closer look at sort of the finger-type wetlands that progress through this whole property, in addition to the property being bounded by three streets, it really didn't make a lot of sense to try to get another local street through here. So, Mr. Schoquist talked to this resident about dedicating a little bit of right-of-way for a permanent cul-de-sac, which would be, of course, desirable to them as well. And then this lot nine would access from the new cul-de-sac. Lots eight and seven would share a driveway onto Clarity. And then it's shown here that lots five and six would share a driveway, but five would have to cross this wetland here. So, they wanna leave it open-ended to see about possibly five having their own driveway, given the fact that along Old Viking, we have numerous driveways already that front upon that road. We do have a fifteen-foot setback though, so we'd have to kinda maybe ask for a variance or a CUP from that, whatever the ordinances require. So, lot four, three, two, and one would all access off of Sodium, direct access. Generally, yeah, staff thinks it's a very workable plan and a good option to bringing, alternative to bringing in another local street. And then we end up with only one new access to Clarity Road, which I think will please the county. And then they'll be giving the additional right-of-way as needed along all three roads. And then I thought they wanted to replat this lot, but apparently that creates issues for mortgages, mortgage companies. So, we're thinking that the dedication of permanent right-of-way might serve the same purpose. So, we talked to Shane Nelson about that. We, staff has no other comments. We like the placement of the proposed pads and everything. And it will be NIH homes again, building in this area, just like Brian's Bend. We're coming up on our, I think, four cows going up in Brian's Bend.
Mr. Schoquist, is there anything you'd like to say?
No, it's pretty simple. I mean, that's the best layout for the whole place. It grows up pre-sized, all that kind of thing in the north. You know, I don't know why the city wouldn't look at this, getting nine little sites without adding one foot of road. So, you're not getting more maintenance than you already have.
Good for both of us.
Yeah. Good for both of us, exactly.
Yeah, if we, if we could get a lot of new developments without any new roads, we'd all be happy, so.
They're extensive, very extensive.
Well, not to mention, yeah, more wetland mitigation and all that, so we're avoiding that also.
Yeah, just the long-term maintenance, it's just.
Right.
I think it's very creative and I appreciate the thought going into it. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just one more question, Liz. So, then on lot five, you would be looking at the west end of that? That's why you're concerned about the setback?
Yeah, we're pushing this over to that western edge, but we can incorporate that into the public hearing notice for the plat.
So, are those two septic sites way out front there? So, if you move the driveway to the west edge, does that impact the septic site? And the other one, obviously, would need to be back beyond the right-of-way for Old Viking?
I don't know where you're seeing the septic.
Aren't the white things your septic?
No.
Oh, no, those are, what are those? Those are hay bales or something.
Oh, that's just.
What are those?
Contour line, maybe.
I have no idea. They gotta make a circle.
I think those were labels from the contours and they showed up funny.
Yeah, I see you can read them, I think it's all.
Yeah, no, that was.
But never mind.
But either way, yeah, we'll have to make sure we have, obviously, septic.
You'd have to get approval from the county about them driveways too in Viking, wouldn't you?
Not in Viking, it's Old Viking.
Clarity Road.
Clarity.
Clarity Road.
That's Old Viking there.
Oh, that's Old Viking, okay. Okay, that's old city. Our engineer looked at that.
Okay, any other thoughts or you wanna give to the applicant?
We've already talked to the county, and county said they'd pretty much do whatever Liz recommended.
Oh, did they? That's a good one.
Do you need a motion here on this list?
No formal motion needed, no.
Okay, then. Anything else to add to it?
Join the meeting?
Then why don't you make that too? You got something, Liz?
No, I, it's a good design.
Harold just made a motion to adjourn, somebody second.
I'll second.
Are we able to get them down the next month or October?
All in favor?
Well, are all your documents gonna be ready though?
What?
Are your documents gonna be ready?
You gotta close this out.
The deadline is actually the third.